Good evening and welcome to the New Franklin Council meeting for May 4, 2022. And we're live tonight from the New Franklin Fire Station 2 on Raff City Lane in Melody Village. We want to thank Chief Leslie and other fire fighters. I don't see any right now, but we want to thank them for that as we enjoyed it. We have three first readings and one second reading tonight. So we'll begin with Community Development, District 7.
We'll open Community Development at 6:01 all members present. Resolution 22R28, a resolution dedicating the section of Renninger Road from Debra Drive to Center Road as the Lieutenant Edward R. Faschnot Memorial Highway declared this emergency in service to the Mayor. I'm sure he has something else to say.
Boy, there's an awful lot to say about Lieutenant Faschnot, but we'll save most of it. I was presenting the legislation today. He is going to be our honoree for the Memorial Day Ceremony. And he's presenting, you know, he was born and raised out here on Renninger Road and lived most of his life here until he joined the U.S. Army Reserve in 1987, became a naval aviation cadet thereafter. And as the legislation says, earned his wings of gold in '92, advanced rather quickly through the ranks to a lieutenant by age 31. Mission commander, flight instructor, tactics officer for the United States Navy Helicopter Mine Squadron at Corpus Christi. And he was tragically killed in a accident in August of 2000 due to mechanical failure. There's a backstory to that with the helicopter that he was flying. Unfortunately, there were defects and those defects weren't caught soon enough to say then his crew. So he is a true American hero and we want to acknowledge him as such. He will be honored at the Memorial Day Ceremony. I've spoken with his brother, spent about an hour on the phone with him yesterday, Pat, just a great young man, also 25 years as a pilot in the military. And his sister and Ed's wife, widow, and two children are all going to try to make the event. So to commemorate, similar to what we did for Joey Ashley a couple of years ago, when we commemorated a section of Nimasilla because that's where he grew up, we'd like to commemorate that section of Renninger from Debra Drive to Center as the Lieutenant Edward R. Faschnot Memorial Highway. And this resolution would permit us to do that and we would make the formal dedication at the Memorial Day Ceremony on Monday, May 3.
Thank you. I don't see any reason why we can't wave the three on this tonight. Does anyone have any questions or concerns, comments? All right, we will close Community Development at 6:03.
Our next resolution is Resolution Number 22R29 and that goes to David Scott.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the Safety Committee. Call it 6:04, we have one piece of legislation in the Safety Committee, all members are present. It's a resolution authorizing the city department into a membership and participation agreement with Metro SWAT and declare an emergency. I can't refer this to the Mayor, but this is nothing new. We've been a member, it's just updating our membership.
Well, we were a member at one time and then most recently we've been a member of the Barberin SWAT. And I've got Captain Brian Kreiner with us and he can answer some additional questions. So for the last several years, we've been part of Barberin's SWAT unit and they have discontinued that. They've announced that they are discontinuing that at the end of June. And so this resolution would permit us to return to the Metro SWAT unit and the annual cost is about $4100. There's a pretty representative group from Summit County. I can't tell you all of them I know, Hudson Instruments, Copley, Captain Kreiner probably knows as well, will have similar service and perhaps, although the relationship with Barberin was top-notch, but this group has, they have some resources even beyond what Barberin had. So I think it'll be a good thing for the city and yet it keeps our autonomy that our guys will be answering, particularly leading the way in terms of any emergency situations that require a SWAT response within New Franklin. And there were a couple of questions that were raised and I had a moment to talk with Captain Kreiner. There was a question about loss or damage to equipment. Essentially, that Metro SWAT has, you know, a vast array of vehicles, equipment, et cetera. We pay the $4100 as do the other communities and that, the cost that we pay is based on population. It's pro-rata on what your population of a particular city is. So that goes basically towards maintenance and acquisition of the materials that the unit, the Metro unit collectively needs. When our team or any other's team responds to an emergency with their own vehicles, their own material, if there's damage to those, they each bear their own respective expenses relative to those. And Captain Kreiner, correct me if I'm missing on any of this stuff.
No, I'm good.
The, there's an indemnity clause that each, all of these entities agree to indemnify the others for negligence, et cetera, which probably under sovereign community is just a restatement of what the law would be anyway. And the termination, there's a clause in here that said the agreement remains in effect. This is item six on the agreement, even if a participating agency should at a later date decide to drop out. And the question was, wait a minute, if you drop out, is the agreement still in effect? And we believe the import of that is that particularly when they formed this, that there was a consortium of communities and just because one might withdraw, the agreement stays in place as to the others. As to the individual members, there's 60 days' notice for withdrawal. And Captain Kreiner, I believe we had to exercise that once before, am I right about that?
Correct. When we went to Barberin SWAT, we had to terminate our contract with Metro SWAT. And there was no, there was no value in having that. So.
One more question is the indemnification for private property. How would that be handled if the SWAT team shows up at, let's just say, 1, 2, 3 Main Street and they do property damage to somebody? It's not part of the actual response, the reason there is?
I don't know. I would tell you from a legal standpoint, I would assume that that's the agency's responsibility. We tried to get clarification on that. I don't, I'm not aware that it would fall to the particular, for instance, if somebody from Copley causes a damage, when they're, you know, responding on behalf of Metro SWAT, it would be Metro SWAT's responsibility as far as any reparations, I assume, other than some kind of intentional conduct. So it expires the end of June. It's, you can go to a second reading if you prefer. If not, we leave up the council. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Martha Lindblad, Goodyear, 5497 Grove Road. Had to do with a couple of things you just mentioned there. You said that there's a cost to New Franklin, $4100 to participate, yet this agreement says there's no charge shall be made to any subdivision. So which is it?
No, it says no charges entering for services rendered by any other subdivision. You're looking at number three, right?
No charge should be made to any political subdivision or even to this contract or services rendered by other political subdivisions under the provisions of this agreement.
I believe that would indicate that, in other words, when they respond to New Franklin, they don't have any financial, any responsibility to us for having provided those services.
So we're not on a hook for their cost to providing the service, Todd?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Each department pays their own manpower as well.
The second question I had, parallels, parallels to what Mr. Powell asked about indemnity, specifically in regard, so it says, we'll hold harmless the other party in this agreement in the event of liability for bodily injury, including wrongful death. And yet, the structure of this, as I read it, it says that if SWAT shows up on site, the control of, the overall command and control of SWAT when they're here falls through the highest ranking officer here, it would be here in New Franklin, correct? So I'd ask that maybe you have the city's legal people look into the fact that if our guys in charge of that and somebody from the Akron SWAT unit comes down here and kills somebody by accident because of negligence, or not even by accident, because of negligence, are, is it possible that City of New Franklin would be open to the lawsuit on that because of who was in command? I'm just asking a question.
I believe the answer to that is no. It's operating as a separate agency. In a negligent situation, first of all, if there was even cause of action, that cause of action would be to, even if our guys are responding, they're responding in their capacity as a member of Metro SWAT.
The guys from Metro SWAT are reporting to, on scene, to our highest ranking?
All part of Metro SWAT. Leadership, responding officers, they're all part of, they're all responding on behalf of the agency. I'm a little bit, I'm pretty comfortable with the agreement from the standpoint that it's been in place for many years and Mr. Powell, do you know how many cities or, Captain Kreiner, how many municipalities?
I believe it's 19, I believe.
Yeah.
I mean, I could have every single one of them, but there's quite a bit.
I think, I think if I follow what, what you're saying is that when a New Franklin, when New Franklin responds, Metro SWAT gets called in, New Franklin essentially becomes Metro SWAT. Is that, is that what?
We respond with our members of the Metro SWAT unit.
Correct. If it's in, if it's in New Franklin, we're basically.
And where the SWAT call out, our members will go no matter what community it is.
But whoever, if it's called to New Franklin, then our ranking officer is controlling. If it goes to Akron or whatever, then it's their ranking officer.
But at that point, you're controlling Metro SWAT, the unit of Metro SWAT, not New Franklin?
Nineteen D says specifically, the highest ranking on new officer of the jurisdiction requesting assistance from Metro SWAT unit will be the officer in charge. So he's the, he's the guy, the guy that's, whatever, if it's Akron or if it's whoever else calls in Metro SWAT, then the team commander will be in charge of the team unit, which is the SWAT team, and will derive his authority and responsibilities from the officer in charge, which is the guy from our commander.
Who's serving in a capacity as a team commander for Metro SWAT? In this capacity?
So I think this kind of follows the min-structure, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, but this is no different like mutual aid. If a fire department goes and helps somebody else in another community, that, whatever community they're in, their highest ranking officer now becomes the commander of that squad. He's, he's not necessarily part of Metro, but he's the one that they're taking the orders from essentially. So this is a very similar agreement, I would, I would believe, as we have mutual aid for police and fire and other communities.
That makes sense from a command and control. I'm just concerned about, is our city open to liability because of that? I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
I believe the answer is no.
Any other questions? If you want to take time outside of me. If there's any clarification, if you need to get any further down, I mean.
I would say it's probably a good idea, David, just to be on the safe side. I think you're right, I think you're right, Kevin. It would probably, probably help us.
If there's any question on that next time we meet.
Mm-hmm. You'll know again.
For Mr. Sinbok. Excuse me. I had to bring, if we have that information, I'm not opposed to that. But for clarification for you, we'll go ahead and get some information. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we're gonna put that on time when it comes up. And we'll go ahead and close the Safety Committee at 6:15.
We have Resolution 22R30 Streets and Drainage, David.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead at 6:15, open up the Streets and Drainage Committee. Again, all members are present in this committee. We have a resolution awarding a bid to North Star Asphalt for the City of New Franklin, 2022 paving project and declaring an emergency. Excuse me, we have, everybody should have got a copy of the streets and the different alternate bids. We have a bid for, the base bid from North Star is $570,363.20. I'm gonna start adding on some alternate bids, which is A, B, C, D. And if we do with, go with everything, it's a total of 1.5 million, 404, 442,379.60. And the, excuse me, the base bid is for Comet Road, which is the entire street, which is approximately 14,564 feet. Again, with Vanderhoof Road, which is Rex Hill, this state about 93, we got all of the feet in that. Alternate bid A is Valley Crest, Sherwood Forest, Bolander, Woodward, Havenwood, Sylvania, Debra, Wild Rose, Brookwood, all of those are entire street.
David, those are the only ones we're asking for. The base bid and alternate A.
Alternate A, okay.
Yeah, those two.
All right. Yep, that's what we got there.
And I would note that Bolander, as indicated in the resolution, that would be Bolander, the section of Bolander that's north of Center Road. And Debra Drive would be the section that's west of Renninger. So it's basically that neighborhood back there.
And you have Woodward as part of section A, but it's not listed on the resolution. That matters.
Yeah, you know, we should.
You should check with me first.
Yeah. Christine and I worked on this and we missed one. So Woodward as well, Valley Crest, Sherwood Forest, Bolander, the section I indicated north of Center, Woodward, Havenwood, Sylvania, Debra, west of Renninger, Wild Rose, Brookwood. The cost of those, of the base bid and alternate A come to 880,000, oh, that was on my page. The, we also went out, we previously authorized participation in the Summit County Chip and Seal. Those numbers have come back. The chip and seal component for the roads submitted, 216,000, this isn't part of this resolution, this is previously approved, but just so you know the numbers, 216,067.50 for chip and seal. Crack seal, 83,747.93. And the striping, 25,273.65. So that component of it, the county part of it, is 325,898.80. When we add all of that together, we arrive at a total paving, chip and seal, crack seal, striping, 2002 project of 1,205,345.57. And as we indicated earlier, Lieutenant and council had approved, we would allocate $600,000 of our ARPA funds towards this project. $200,000 has been appropriated and budgeted out of the streets and the balance of 405,345. And some odd cents would come from the general fund. So this will be the second year that we're able to, to take on a pavement project in excess of a million dollars. So I think it's a good use of the ARPA funds and the streets selected were based on a variety of factors, but it's fair to say largely on the pavement condition ratings that we did, that we commissioned a few years ago. And going forward, it's our intention, we're going to, we're getting a price to update those now that we're into 2022. And get from that, form a plan going forward for where we go from here. We put a pretty good dent, we started, we've got a pretty good start. And, you know, the investment in paving is a big deal in terms of longevity. But the intention then will be going forward would be to, we'll get, we'll update the pavement condition ratings. And I think at that point, we're gonna want to sit with Streets and Drainage and with our deputy service director. And we're specifically gonna talk to the consultants to assist us in their recommendation of a prioritization going forward. So when we get into, you know, as we hit the budget appropriation meetings, when we get into September and October this year, we should be in a position to, number one, have an idea of what can we realistically dedicate towards the paving and then what, you know, what sequence might we want to proceed? So that's the plan of the paving project.
Any other questions? Vanderhoof been involved in this, does it all with?
Yeah, that's, you're right.
Bad sessions.
90,000. All right, I forgot the term. Obviously, much needed.
I think it's a good program. I talked to Sue a little bit about this before the meeting, to see if there's any way we could squeeze a little bit more money out to maybe do an extra, one of the extra items. But then as soon as they're talking about the funds we're going towards the Summit County project, with the striping, the chip seal and stuff like that, so it looks like we're hitting our original budget carry number.
Anything else?
I have a question, I guess. On January 19th, when we approved the ARPA, ARCA, whichever funds, and we talked about the 600,000 going to paving, you said that you were planning a budget, a paving budget of about a million dollars plus the 600,000 to do that. Now, I checked the video, so, you know, because there was a lot of discussion about it and you were asked, well, about it and you said that the money, the ARPA fund money would be in addition to the planned million dollar budget. So, so I'm thinking that we should be at 1.6 million instead of 1.2 and what can we do? And then my next question, this way you can, you know, put it all at once. As I understood it, we're expecting hopefully another 700, 750,000 this summer. What are plans with that and would we be able to go ahead and do all the suggested, proposed sections of paving that we're ignoring this time? Would we be able to add those on now we have a bid and a price and just go ahead and get everything done this summer?
Two-fold. First of all, and I'm sure if you checked, I'm sure, I don't dispute, I must have said that. I would tell you, apparently I was being optimistic. What followed, you know, that was prior to us sitting down for our budget meetings. And once we did that and we sat and we saw what funds we had available, that's when we made the decision that, you know, what was really the most prudent and conservative approach we could take relative to it and the ones, you know, the ones, the numbers you're seeing now are a little bit higher than what we came out of that meeting with. We hoped to spend about 1.1 million. And I indicated that, I think I sent that to you folks. Yeah, I sent you guys all an email on March 14th, so probably when we came out with the budget. And when I said out to everybody, I said we had budgeted 600,000 from ARPA, 200 from roads, 300 from general funds for a total of 1.1 million. So at that point, that's what we saw. We're actually, as you can see, going up another 100,000 over that just because. I would suggest that we be careful with that second tranche, as they like to call it. Oh, tranche, tranche. That second 700,000. And I laugh with Susan, you know, we spent that about three times already, I have. Now, there's a lot of projects that we may want to dedicate that to, that you may determine you may want to dedicate that to. So I'm just reluctant to dedicate all the paving at this point in time. I think, I haven't heard anything that suggests a significant increase a year from now in the sense that I think last year at this time, we thought, you know, we're getting some really good prices and let's try to take advantage of them. I didn't see that this year. The county's estimates for chip and seal, they estimated low, numbers came in higher than the county estimated. So I don't know that this is the time either to invest the extra funds. And finally, some of these other alternates, they were good ideas, but some of the roads on those alternates, under the pavement condition ratings are not, at least according to the expert, weren't in that bad shape. They have, you know, good, fair, poor. And some of these that were suggested were in the good category. And they were included because, well, maybe we get a better deal because it's close to a fair road. So I think we'd be better served to take another hard look at what we want to do next before we commit to that, spending that additional 700,000.
And the 216 for chip and seal, what are we chipping and sealing and, you know, it seems like a lot of money that, well, we've been trying to get away from chip and seal.
Unfortunately, I don't know if I've got that one with me. I'll have to provide that for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think I brought that one with me. But, well, we used to spend about 300,000 a year. You got this. What can we do?
Yeah, some of it. Yeah, I think that was.
Oh, okay. That's a 227. Do you remember?
Well, it came up at 216, but.
Oh, man, that was probably the estimate. Yeah. Rex Hill Road, 1.4 miles and Van Buren, 2.7 miles. Came up to 227,000, so it looks like those are the two roads there.
Is that 227, including the striping and the?
No, that's a separate number. The pavement markings are on Center, Renninger, West Caston, Van Buren, 619, State Road, South Turkeyfoot, and there's some school markings at Nimasilla and Renninger.
You said chip and seal, you said that 220-something and earlier you said?
Well, that was the estimate.
That was the estimate.
Oh, yeah. And then the numbers came a little higher than the estimates since we indicated, actually a little bit. Is it on that one under 50?
216.
Yeah, 216.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
That's a little bit less.
Crack seal, maybe this would have come in. The crack seal, we estimated at 91,000, 28,000. Yeah, actually, our estimates weren't bad. I guess it was county engineer's estimates that were a little higher. And then the, Frank, oh, yeah, we got that one. Yeah, the crack seal is Nimasilla, South Turkeyfoot Lake, State Road 93, 236, 619. Brian's been talking about those for quite a while in terms of trying to preserve those through the crack seal, so.
Anything else?
Does this resolution need to be amended because of Woodward? Or is it just, you know, good enough with alternate A?
There's no reason not to add it.
Yeah, I put, I'm, I put Woodward on there. To add Woodward. Then how are we on time?
Bids are good for 60 days. So on the other hand, I guess, well, obviously you can take another reading if you choose.
There's a scheduling thing about, that's always been an issue.
Yeah, there's that.
I mean, it's a big bid, but the earliest you get in, they give a schedule.
That's correct.
You know, a couple of weeks sometimes could change the scheduling. I'm not that.
Yeah, I would have to defer to your, your experience with that.
Usually, if we can get it, if it's been a, you know, we went off the bid, we got the bids, usually we try to get that passed and we can get it to them and get on the schedule. Do you agree with that, Kevin, or?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah. Because I know you, you have to, the city, you have some of those. Sooner or later, you can get on the, you know, get in line and get in the bids.
It's probably a year worth of 400,000.
Yep. So, yeah, I'm gonna, I would like to ask for time on that and, I mean, not on time, I'm sorry to waive that and we'll just see how it plays out. And, I mean, not on time, I'm sorry to wave that, and we'll just see how it plays out.
We have a second reading.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close Streets and Drainage at 6:30. Oh, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
So going to second or passing tonight?
No, we're, I'm gonna ask the way. So that'll be up to council. I'm gonna ask for it, and if council wants to do it.
They'll do it.
We have a second reading resolution number 22R23, Mr. Cox.
Thank you. We will open the finance committee at 6:30. Mr. Daniels?
This is a resolution accepting a proposal for software solutions for the purchase of the VIP analytic software and implementation and declaring due to emergency. This is something we talked about, this is the second reading, we talked about it, just give it a moment of time, because it is a chunk of money, but haven't heard any negative thoughts about it. We've seen the demonstration on it, and it looks like it's going to be an improvement. So I think we could pass the way to three. Anybody have any comments?
Okay, so we will ask the way to third on resolution 22R23 and close the finance committee at 6:31.
We'd like to open the City of New Franklin regular meeting, and it's coming live from New Franklin Fire Station to address the lane, and the time is 6:31. Federality would stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible and verity, and just as strong.
Charlie, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
President.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the meetings from April 20.
Second.
Charlie, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Is there any public comment? Anybody have any questions?
5822 going on the road. The paving down going on the road. Is that going to be scraped and then repaved, or is it paved on top?
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Paul, is it going to be scraped first?
I believe so.
Okay, we're starting to build up. Some of our neighbors have a drop that much between the street and their sidewalk, and another layer would just make that worse.
No, I believe they grade first. Yeah.
Okay. Make sure they verify that.
Did you say two on, two off?
Usually, they're like a two on, two off program. They take two inches off, they compress and do two down.
Okay.
So if anything, that shouldn't increase.
Right. Ours is not affected, but some of our neighbors are. In the wintertime, they get a layer of ice right in front of their driveway.
Is that going to take it down enough, Kevin, to do that?
I haven't seen what the bids spec works. I know if they want to adopt specs, that's typically what it is, that's a two on, two off.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it's fine.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mark Seibach, Rook Road. Question I forgot to ask before, when we were talking about this SWAT agreement?
Yes.
Just curious, how many times in the last 10 years have you needed utilized SWAT services in New Franklin?
I know one on SWAT, that was about three years ago.
Yeah. Just one up on.
So that would be two?
For our area, it's, it depends, it goes year to year. We've roughly had a handful.
How many do you go to other areas for? Is it something that you do frequently?
I wouldn't say it's frequent, no.
Do you have any?
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's keep it that way.
Yeah, I think that's good. Any other questions?
Ball 6325 lead. Eastern Road is, I would not have ever thought you could actually cold patch an entire road together, but there's nothing left of the road. Is it something that is being looked at, being paved in the future, in the future?
I don't know where that falls. I have to defer to Brian and take a look on that. We're talking about the section from.
619 down to Van Buren.
Yeah.
It's the very edge of our, it is.
Right, right, right. There's some discussion back there, it's.
I don't think anyone lives two houses back there.
No, there's only a couple houses down there. There's a street with, I think it is, that runs off there. So there's been some discussion, it would be a joint project. We've got the, we're on the south side, and Barberton's on the north side. And there's a piece of it that's coming from township as well. So the engineer's got a piece of the mix. So there's been some discussion there. There's also a culvert that they're looking to replace there. It's about $150,000 a project. I was talking to Barberton today, as a matter of fact, because they've got some different plans back in that stretch.
Who's got a culvert?
Well, the engineer would like us to split that with them. I told them last year that we had a few other priorities we were trying to address, just because it's just not a, you know, that street doesn't have a lot of impact on this city. So, but there's no debate that it's not in good shape. So it turns out that Barberton is, well, I don't want to, there may be some development from our friends to the north in that area, and it might end up addressing that, so.
So it might be addressed later, if not right now. Correct?
Right. I would say it's not in, it's not.
Not in the future, in the future, I think is what he's saying to you. They talked about it, but that's already done. Am I correct?
Yes.
Anybody else have anything? Kelly, would you read the first resolution 22R23?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
A resolution dedicating the section of Renninger Road from Deborah Drive to Center Road as the Lieutenant Edward R. Fossnet Memorial Highway and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to community development, and we move to wait for three.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Charlie, would you do a roll call?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 22R28.
Senator.
Charlie, would you read the motion?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 22R28.
Senator.
Charlie, would you read the motion?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 22R-30 with amendment of adding Woodward
into the paving.
Second.
Charlie, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 22R-30 with amendment of adding Woodward
into the paving.
Second.
Charlie, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Charlie, would you read resolution 22R23?
A resolution accepting a proposal from Software Solutions for the purchase of the VIP analytic software and implementation and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to the finance committee, and we move to waive the three greetings.
Second.
Charlie, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 22R23.
Second.
Charlie, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. We have no further greetings, so now the favorite part of the meeting, latest report, because it's always so short and sweet.
Yes, that's the way we like them. We want to thank, well, you've already done, and we'll thank again, Fire Chief Leslie and Assistant Chief Young and Katie Howell and the crew for hosting us, and Mr. Cox for the idea to take the show on the road here.
Oh, thank you. And Katie Smith for helping put everything together also.
And next on my list was Robert Keith as well, to handle the, between the IT portion of this thing. He's just tireless when it comes to that. I wanted to mention, while I'm thinking about that, that we were looking for places in some of the other wards, and the library has a, has a nice meeting room that perhaps we could use for a meeting over there, so.
That would be great.
You know, we can talk about that whenever you feel that's appropriate. The Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee met last Tuesday, had an excellent meeting, great exchange of ideas and thoughts. I want to thank Manchester United Methodist Church for hosting that event. And the Public Visioning Event, which is the first big event for the whole community, will be later in May. They're trying to firm up the particular date for that. And we'll get as much publicity out to everybody as we can on that. That'll be the first opportunity for the city to come in and really begin sharing their ideas and their thoughts for the comprehensive plan. So that's off to a good start. Sailing into summer, the Memorial Day weekend begins on Sunday, May 29th, with our Sailing Into Summer event. That's at the Tudor House from noon to 5:00. We think we have 30 vendors lined up. We've got food trucks, there'll be beer and wine, there'll be some children's activities, and it's just a lot of fun, so particularly if the weather cooperates. So we had a great crowd last year, and we expect more this year, and please come out and join us, and come have a good time. And then the following day, of course, will be the parade, and it's just fun to announce these things again after being in mothballs for a while. And we had it last year, but still, it's, so we'll be live. We want to thank Grace Church in advance, they always allow a setup, but there's so many people, and we'll acknowledge all of them as we go along, but really looking forward to that weekend and that opportunity to honor all of, all of our veterans, particularly those who paid the ultimate cost, and specifically here at Fashna.
Does Grace and I have a minute to take, or is?
Sure, I trust they will, of course. And I want to thank Christine Lipikat, who is doing a great job setting up and organizing that parade, and also the Sailing Into Summer from our office. Two more things, I think. One is David Whitner, who has been a loyal member of our BZA for a number of years, has other commitments going on, and announced that he needed to retire or resign from that, from the BZA. His term expires December 31st of 2022, and upon the recommendation of his own director, Barry Gino, and we, I would like to appoint Dan Darrow. Dan joined as an alternate earlier this year, and he's doing a good job. So I'd like to appoint Dan Darrow to the balance of this term, which will expire December 31st, 2022. And I need a motion from council, or a motion from council to approve that appointment.
So moved.
So second.
Do you want us to go ahead and make the motion, or?
Yeah, David, yeah. I say the motion.
So moved.
Yep.
Charlie, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I spoke correctly, that, so that'll be for the term that will expire December 31st, 2022.
Correct.
All right. And lastly, Mr. Powell brought to our attention the, some honors for a young lady by the name of Aura Snyder. And we followed up on that, and we have spoken with her family members, and we obtained some information about Aura, and we are intending at this point to honor her. And I will tell you about her by reading this proclamation that we'll be asking the council to approve this evening. Now comes the council of the city of New Franklin, and hereby makes the following declaration. Whereas Aura Snyder, a New Franklin resident currently living at St. Luke's Lutheran Community Center, celebrated her 102nd birthday on April 29th of this year. And whereas Aura Snyder was married to Donald Snyder for 23 years until his passing in 1960, and together they had six children, 16 grandchildren, 32 great-grandchildren, and 42 great-great-grandchildren. And whereas Aura Snyder has enjoyed a full life, serving in the kitchen at the Coventry Schools, and then as head chef at Dietz's and Casamiti Restaurant, while savoring time spent with her family, playing board games, fishing, crocheting, reading, listening to music, watching the backyard birds, and occasionally enjoying a beer or two. And that was shared by her family. And whereas, to the best of our knowledge, Aura Snyder is now the oldest living resident in the city of New Franklin. Now therefore, a recognition and celebration of a life well lived, the council of the city of New Franklin belatedly designates Friday, April 29th, 2022, as Aura Snyder Day in the city of New Franklin, extends best wishes for many more years ahead. Approved this fourth day of May, 2022, by the city council of the city of New Franklin, Southern County, Ohio. And I ask for a motion from council to approve this proclamation.
So moved.
So second.
Charlie, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Beautiful. And Mrs. Jones, I'll present, I'll get your signature after the meeting. And then the family indicated that sometime next week, it'd like sometime, that probably going to be in the morning around 10 o'clock or so. So we'll see what's convenient for that family. I'll certainly let you know anybody else that can join us. I have not checked recently with St. Luke's in terms of whether there's any restriction on, and it's still any restriction on how many of us can come, but we'll make sure to present this personally and directly to Mrs. Snyder. Yeah, that's pretty amazing. I got eight grandchildren and I have a hard time remembering the birthdays. 42 great-greats. Ay, 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 32 greats. 74 grandchildren or great-grandchildren. God bless Aura Snyder.
That's a village.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Paul. Susan?
Just that we are continuing to work on our gap for our financial report. It will be out by the end of May. And then we are already starting on our audit. So that's kind of keeping us busy at the present time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any old business?
Real quick, just to go along with the mayor's report for Sale in the Summer, please come out to Tudor House. Your, the improvements that they've made so far are just fabulous. And so you'll be amazed if you haven't seen it and you've been there last year and you come this year going, wow. And it's only the beginning. So please come out and I love you.
Can you walk through the inside too?
Usually they have it open.
Okay.
Will there be anybody on site, do you know, that maybe could do a tour or something?
I will be happy not to speak for anybody.
There might be someone there though that would walk you through.
I will say, well, they were a little bit concerned. I was over and talked to about a lot of people tracking through because of just the fragility and the age of building. That was a little bit of a concern of Tim's, but I'm sure you can get in and see it.
Tudor House Commission met Monday night and we talked about that very thing.
What'd they say?